Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call to order our planning commission meeting today, January 31st. As always, we kick off all our meetings with an invocation. I'll ask Mr. Slade if he doesn't mind.
What a privilege it is to open our time together today before you, before you've grown and acknowledge your presence here with us. And thank you, Lord, for the many blessings that you have provided to our county, to these men, Father, for their sacrifices that they made to serve this community. I pray for them to have wisdom this morning so that as decisions are reached, Lord, they are in keeping with your will. Father, they please you. Father, thank you for the privilege that we have to participate in our government. I pray, Father, that we won't ever take that for granted. Lord, thank you for protecting us, providing for us, good men and women, Lord, who serve our community as first responders especially. I pray for them, Lord, our police, our firefighters, Lord, our ambulance folks, all those folks, Lord, that put themselves on the line so that they can protect life and liberty. Father, I just praise you for giving them to us. I ask that you protect them and bring them home safely in Christ's name.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. I would entertain a motion to approve January 3rd minutes. Please, Mr. Morris, the second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign. Motion carries. All business, Mr. Renee.
There is no all business.
All right, we'll move on to new considerations. A, please, ma'am.
The first item is a conditional use permit for Sarah Cook at 154 Hidden Ranch Road. Hidden Ranch is off of White Road, and this property is at the very end of Hidden Ranch. She's seeking the conditional use permit to replace a single wide manufactured home with a new 2017 28 by 68 manufactured home. It's a 36.9 acre parcel of family land, and it's zoned RE1A. There are two other homes on this property. This is her site plan. She's going to put her manufactured home in the same spot as the old one. This is a view of the existing manufactured home that will be replaced with the double wide. And then these are just surrounding properties. We have posted that one and published the notice in the paper. That hearing's going to be on Monday, the 4th, and we don't have any, we haven't received any calls.
It won't be a problem, won't be a problem at all.
First, I want Mr. Morris, the second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Renee.
The next item is a dimensional variance request by Green Earth Materials LLC. It's for lots 14, 15, 16, and 17 of Fallen Oaks subdivision Phase 1. Fallen Oaks subdivision is off Highway 25, on the east side of 25. They're seeking the dimensional variance from the minimum lot width on these four lots. The property is zoned RE1, which requires a minimum lot width of 100 feet. That's an aerial view of the property. This is their site plan. These lots are in the cul-de-sac. It's these four lots right here. And so they're requesting a variance of 24 feet on Lot 14, 34 feet on Lot 15, 50 feet on Lot 16, and 28 feet on Lot 17. All of the lots in Phase 1 exceed the minimum lot size of 1 acre, and 14 of the 28 lots are 2 acres or larger. The application cites four reasons for the variance request. There's a major gas line that bisects the property, a ditch with some wetlands, the fact that no lots are smaller than 1.5 acres, and then the fact that the developer was trying to work with the natural lay of the land and leave natural drainage ways intact. This is a view of that entrance to the subdivision from Highway 25. That also is set for Monday, and we've not received any calls. The signs have been out, and the notice has been posted in the paper, published in the paper.
First, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Renee.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Lewis Mark Stackhouse at 2244 Star Road. This property is located on the west side of Star Road. Mr. Stackhouse is seeking the conditional use permit to construct a second dwelling on this property. It's a three acre parcel. It's zoned A1. This is a view of that property. The home will be for his mother, who is moving here from Arkansas. She's 87 years old, and she needs assistance. And this is his site plan. This is his existing house, and he's showing the new home will be built 400 feet behind his existing home. He was previously approved in 2017 for a conditional use permit for his in-laws to place a manufactured home on the property, and it has been removed. This is a view of that property.
Is the home, there'll be similar construction as the primary residence of the mother-in-law plan?
I'm not sure if he's here today or not.
Just tell him when he comes in on the 15th that we, you know, just be able to answer that question. I mean, I don't have overall problem, but just assuming the neighbors don't have a problem, he just needs to be a similar type of construction, you know, same color, similar brick, or trim collar, that kind of stuff to go with it. But I make the motion, we set it for the 15th.
Second.
Motion, I want to say, I'm second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Renee.
The next item is a conditional use permit for Little Woods LLC for lots 3 and 4 of Little Woods subdivision Phase 1. This property is located on the south side of Little Woods Road. He's seeking the conditional use permit to mine four acres. It'll be on lots 3 and 4. They're proposing construction of a pond to lessen the drastic changes in elevation on these two lots. The excess dirt is suitable for structural fill, and they would like to sell the material for construction projects in the area. This is their site plan. Let me see, the pond where they're proposing to build it here, that's lots 3 and 4. They listed in their application that the proposed hours of operation would be 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and that it should be completed, the mining operation should be completed within 12 months, if not sooner. These are views of that lot 3 and 4. This is a surrounding property. And then this is just a view back to Andrew Chapel from where 3 and 4 are.
I might want to say it.
First, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Renee.
Okay, so the next thing is the architectural review for HSC Florence LLC. It's the proposed Dollar General store. It's at 1500 Highway 469 South. It's located on the west side of 469.
This is just a continuation.
It is. They were previously approved on January 15th contingent upon the front and sides of the building being split face block or brick. These were the elevations that they had presented us at that time. They're proposing an alternative material, fiber cement exterior siding.
I wanted y'all to see it. They got a sample piece. You don't mind bringing it up there, let them see it.
It's manufactured and marketed for commercial and residential applications, and y'all have pictures of a Dollar General.
Yeah.
It looks like brick, but it's not. It's just a simulation of it, I guess, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah. They called and asked, and sent that, actually made a trip up here. The visit with Renee, I wasn't available at that time. But they're asking, would we consider that? They show pictures where it's on other places. I told them that district would be something to board.
Other places in Rankin County?
No. They'd like these pictures of some other buildings they've done in it.
I think they ought to just build, build that building.
That's pretty darn good, isn't it?
We know they can.
With brick. We just, we just built a shop for our own self, and we put split face blocks on it, and I just, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jared.
No, I'm just, I mean, I'm just asking. I think what he's talking about, I mean, he's just asking us, and I told him I would talk about it, something about the, they'd have to redesign some things to do something. It's just several different issues. Obviously, I don't think, is anybody here?
Mr. Reams is here today.
Good. Okay, well, let him come up if you don't mind, and he can explain it better than I Appreciate you being here.
Good morning. My name is Scott Reams. I'm the Director of Development for Hicks Nederker Companies in Daphne, Alabama. We are the applicant. We have been working on this project for quite some time, and we appreciate the board's conditional approval of our application in the last meeting. Since that time, it had come to our attention in that meeting that the board would like either a masonry split face block or brick material on the exterior of the building. This project is way down the pipeline in our production. The building's been ordered. It is a pre-engineered metal building, foundation, structural, all those designs are done. Our timeline is to start this project next month, within 30 days. We are the contract purchaser of the land. The plan, all the, all the work has been done, all the permitting has been done, et cetera. We have proposed a product called Nitsia High. It is a fiber cement material. I did have a call and conversation with Brian, your building official, about the product. There were some questions that did come out of that conversation, and I'd like to answer those today. I have a picture, which is on the manufacturer's website, of a Dollar General that was built. If you'd like to circle like this, this project was built in Bennington, Vermont. So it is a very durable product. It's a 15-year manufacturer warranty plus a 15-year finish warranty. The product is, it's a moisture management product in so much that it's not pervious like a brick material is. All the fastening devices are behind the product, so it's not a screwed-on product. It starts with a starter strip at the bottom. It's installed in 18 by 6-foot panels, which are integrated with fastening devices behind the product. So it has a barrier between the sheeting and the product to act like a brick product does. It touch, it feels, and looks exactly like a brick material. The advantage of this material is that when you have a pre-engineered building like this, we can simply flip the panels around of the metal building, sheet it, and then install this product on. I don't have to re-engineer a foundation for brick ledging, extra additional rebar, change the metal building itself. It'd have to be redesigned for all of that. And you get the look and the feel and the durability of a brick product. It is a little bit less than brick. When I say a little bit, $10,000 less than brick, but it's still a $50,000-plus add to my budget, which was not budgeted. So our team, I think, has done a great job of researching product. We've used this project, product on the pictures that we presented to you on products, projects in Florida, up in the northeast, in Lake George. We're building a project right now that has this product on it, so it's a very durable product. It's also Miami-Dade wind-loaded and approved for Miami-Dade hurricane standards, so it's just not a standard clad that you would put on a building. So it's a very technically sound product. It's a durable product, and it's going to give the board the look of a three-sided wrapped brick building that you're looking for. So with that, I would like the board's approval to move forward and build this project.
When we discussed it, didn't we say brick or split face block? So why would his foundation plans not, why would you go in a different direction?
Because the foundation, you have to set brick ledges.
Well, I understand that, but whenever you apply, or when it come before us, I mean, we, this isn't like coming in here behind you and making you.
It somewhat is.
You should have known.
It is supervisor, somewhat new to us. We did, I sent my engineer and my staff up here to meet with the planning staff, and there was no mention, this is our first project in the county. We have not built another Dollar General within the county. And there's no standard, architectural standard within your code depicting that. And there was no mention that it was going to be a requirement, that we would have that during those meetings.
Is this what the building is going to look like when you're finished?
No, sir. That's the building that it's going to look like, wrapped in full height on the front and three sides in a vintage brick material, which is the sample that I brought.
Well, I like this for a Dollar, that's a good-looking Dollar General.
I think, I think what the general is referring to, the vast majority of family daughters out in the rural parts of the county are typically just, I mean, that's essentially what you get, you know, to some degree. And that's probably why he is not aware of the opportunity that we may require brick, you know, in our county.
Addressing your comments, sir, we develop, our firm, I represent, our firm is the Director of Development of this particular client in six states: Oregon, California, New York, Ohio, Mississippi, and Florida. The product, the pictures that we brought were projects that were done in Florida, where we used the project, product as a Wayne's Cut, okay, because it is durable. You can't run an EPHAS material in Florida specifically all the way down to the flatwork because it's not durable. People, chopping carts, you know, feet are up against it, et cetera. So we've been using this product to, because it is durable. And it also meets our architectural standards.
How possible to use this product compared to the brick and split block?
And the thing about it, and one, it's a new product that I've not seen, that we've not seen. I mean, it does make an attractive building. I understand what you're saying. You, we didn't have a, we don't, and maybe it's something we should have done, maybe it's our fault, we should have had something that says, maybe that this is what we require. I was assuming y'all had built something here before because of the different ones around, until after having a discussion with you, that this is your first one to build here in Mississippi. And so that, that was where I was, I guess, wrong in that I did think y'all should have known because you had all these others built that way.
If I may correct the record, we've built many projects in our building, many projects in the state of Mississippi. This is the first one that we've done within the county.
Oh, okay.
And most of our projects that are in rural markets look like that.
First Dollar General in the county.
Yes, that we've built. Yes, sir.
Right, that's what I thought.
And we are the property owners. We self-perform the construction through our sister company, Fulcrum Construction, so we are one-stop shop, if you will.
So I mean, I understand what he's saying, since he had already designed it, assuming he could use a metal building, and we didn't tell him upfront that he needed it to be brick or split face, he's trying to salvage what he's got at this point.
What, what did we tell him upfront?
I think we've been pretty consistent about all of our, you know, buildings, commercial buildings, on the highway, and the other Dollar Generals that are in our county, we've required all of them to brick.
Well, I'm saying upfront, in, prior to, when he first came here asking, wanting a permit to build, it's nothing that said it's going to be split face.
The only time that I ever heard about it, we said split face and brick.
That was the last meeting.
Yeah.
That's on, yeah, what, two meetings?
That was the only other time that I've heard of it.
That's the only time I heard about it.
When they come to the office, we don't normally tell them, that's a decision that the board makes on what you want to see.
This is the time that we make that decision. This is our, our planning commission, and this is our architectural site review, and this is the time that we work with builders and tell them what we want.
But what you did is went on him.
He must have ordered his building in advance.
Ordered the building prior to meeting with us on our planning commission meeting.
Because we have to be consistent on everything we've done as far as the brick from the same point?
I've got two news since I've been there in my district, and we've done the same thing.
The cerebral and the residual have done the same thing. And I guess that's the precedence we're going to create once we start down this road of allowing that, then that's going to open up a whole nother can of worms in my mind.
With all due respect, you're looking, you want the brick look, the brick feel, the brick look.
But we want the brick.
But this is a brick, it is a brick without being a full brick. It performs better than a brick material.
But we don't know in 10 years what it's going to look like. And, and it's going to crack up, and it's going, I mean, if you were 10 years down the road and we could look at that, I might would have a different opinion. But you can't, I mean, you can tell me, but I can't see it.
The product has manufacturer's warrant in excess of 10 years.
I understand.
15 years.
My roof has a 30-year warranty, and it's 17 years old, and I'm having to replace it.
Yeah, I get it. You know, I can't, I can't look into the future. I can only deal with today. But I will tell you, of all the projects that we've done with this particular product, it performs very well. And again, if, if the manufacturer is representing a Dollar General in Bennington, Vermont, in harsh conditions, I mean, I think the product performs certainly.
How long, how long have you been using this product?
I've been developing Dollar Generals for this firm for six years, so it's six years to change. Yes, sir.
I thought you mentioned the price difference. What'd you say the price difference was between this and this $10,000 difference? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just for product, yeah. Not including re-engineering.
He's already ordered the building.
Yeah, I've got a building sitting there, ready to go under construction.
He got the car for the horse, so to speak, and, you know, and ordered everything, assuming he was not going to have to put brick up. And now we, you know, I like the material. Material, I get where he's coming from. It may not be prevalent because it's not that big of a price difference yet in our market, you know, but it solves his problem, it solves our problem, you know, by having a brick look to it and a brick feel if you get up there and touch it.
That doesn't really solve our problem. Our problem would be if it installs.
I mean, it does. We don't want metal, we don't want metal, I want brick.
The problem just begins is everybody else comes behind you.
Well, that may be fine. I mean, that may be a suitable replacement for it. I don't, you know, that's up to them, you know? I mean, that's, that's an acceptable material to the, to the building code, is it not? I mean, is this material an acceptable building material?
It's approved.
I mean, so, I mean, it goes to the test to sustain the building code, otherwise it wouldn't get approval for that. So the look is there.
Metal's also an approved material, you know, but we don't approve that.
But this is a brick. Look, look at it. Could you not tell if it was from a distance, it was brick or real brick or not?
I don't know.
You know?
Building code's minimum requirements.
As I said before, I'm in favor of the material if he wants to use it. That will go that route. Let's, I think we beat this up, make a decision, gentlemen.
Sounds like the, sounds like the board is going to want, want split face brick. I mean, that, I think you've heard it, it sounds like it's, that's, that's the right road they want to go on. They don't want to change because the fact that it's going to change, we said, everybody else has gone that split face. Not that if you'd come in here in the beginning, or you'd waited, but we, you'd have known, and this is where we usually make those decisions, and it's unfortunate that you've ordered the building. And I think I talked to you on the phone, I told you, you know, you're welcome to bring it, but it would be a board decision. I couldn't tell you how they were going to react to that, and I, so I was honest in, in my statement there. So I think you pretty much can see the board's going to want the split face brick.
If I could address the board, when we build these projects, we always send our staff and our engineers to the municipality to sit down with them to go over what the requirements of the code are, to talk specifically about the projects. And that's what we did. There's nothing stated within your code with respect to architectural enhancements.
Well, the same.
May I finish, sir?
Go ahead.
Thank you. With, with, with that said, if there is something in other municipalities that we develop, we develop on the Gulf Coast, there's requirements as far as color and materials. It's stated in their code. We do that. We're not here to change the rules, to break the rules, we're here to follow the rules. So when my team comes up to meet with staff, to set out the rules, if somebody would have simply said, "Look, architecturally, see your elevations," that's not going to work. Every dollar General, it's built in the county, has a split. We could have designed the building upfront and made accommodations for it at that time, and also included it in our budget. None of that was done. So, you know, simply, if, if that's something that the board desires on every project to follow mine, then I would suggest making an adoption of architectural requirements to the code. So the applicant knows exactly what the rules are upfront.
Right.
And, you know, we want to build a project for the community. You yourself, Supervisor Morrison, said that the, that you were, we want you to come. We want to build. I've got this thing scheduled to start construction the end of next month. So I don't think we were cart before the horse on getting everything done. We came here day one and met with everybody to talk about our project specifically. And we're here to build projects to the codes.
I don't know if you talked about the product until you came to the meeting, now.
We didn't know that we needed it because there was no mention of that we, what the requirement was.
Right.
So here I am, way down the road, backtracking to meet the requirement of the look and the feel of a brick. It's a vintage brick material by name and application. It's a three-story, up to three stories vertical. It meets all the requirements of building code, if you will. So it's accomplishing, to me, what the board is looking for in this project. And it's a new product, product that the board would potentially consider for other future projects to come. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Anybody got any other comment?
Let me ask a question, gentlemen. If, what if we, we have Carl come into the board meeting on Monday, do we not? Maybe we could send him an email to maybe get him to do a little research on this material and this kind of thing, so he can provide all the credibility to the, to the, to the product before we make a decision, you know, or at least postpone that decision and see what Carl has to say at the first part of the meeting? We have an architect who's coming to our meeting on Monday that's doing one of our big courthouses behind. If we can get some independent, not saying you're not telling us what's accurate, but if we can get some independent credibility that what, what we're doing here is a good substitute, then the board may be able to get their hands around a little bit quicker since this is a new product to the marketplace.
I mean, certainly, it's been used on national branded products like Walgreens and hotels and...
I have no doubt it has been. I really do. I don't have a problem with it myself, but they have some issues with it, and I think, I see this as a source for them to have some credibility from a different source, independent source, to say what this stuff does, and it's a good, good substitute, given where we are in this situation. It's going to make, we're going to put you off till Monday, but that's, I think, the best I can get the board willing to do, to compromise.
That'd be a fair compromise, I think.
If you'll bear with us till Monday, and then we'll come up with something then.
I would appreciate that. And, and I think, again, it's a new product to the board and to the area that could be used as a solution for other people down the road. So I would welcome that.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate the board's attention.
How do you want to handle this?
Just table it to Monday.
Are we going to be able to bring it back up within the board meeting?
We're going to take the opportunity to, y'all may have to state on the record that you are reconvening as a planning commission for the purpose of the architectural review on Monday, but we can handle that logistically, we'll show it on the minute.
Okay.
Let's just table it to Monday.
Brian, if you would make sure you got all the necessary information, and then get with somebody, Renee, whatever, about getting with Mr. Carl. And Laura, if you'll make a motion, you know, get Carl to call and kind of let him be here to discuss it to some degree, you know, for us. We appreciate it. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Nuisance properties. A, Mr. Slade.
Gentlemen, item A under the nuisance property section is the continuation of the Plesswells Jr. estate nuisance property at 2412 South Pearson Road. Renee, do we have photos to demonstrate?
There's been no change. You know, it's in an estate, and we continued it till today, so you could find out the status through the.
That's correct.
Hines County Chancery Clerk. You found out the attorney who is handling the estate, and you asked me to send a letter, just notifying him that there was an issue, nuisance property issue. I told him about the violations. I also told him that the hearing was continued today in case he wanted to be here, but I'm not sure if he's here or not. I've not been contacted by him.
We'll, for the purposes of the record, we'll, we'll make that clear. Is there anyone here representing the estate of Plesswells Jr.? Anyone here? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. At this time, my suggestion, my request would be that the board consider authorizing the cleanup of this property and the establishment of the appropriate lien against the property for all costs of remediation, and allow that to become a taxable event for the purpose of collection. Eventually, as this moves through the estate process, this property is going to have to be disposed of as a part of the estate proceeding. And it would be my thought, at least, if there is, I would anticipate, that as this property changes hands, that tax obligation will have to be cleared.
And what are we doing, tearing the house down?
No.
Or just get rid of the stuff?
This is, this would just be to clean it up, as I appreciate, Jared, is that sort This is, this would just be to clean it up as I appreciate, Jared, is that sort of what you had in mind?
That house is not, it wouldn't be one to tear down.
So this would be-
I got a question about that because, you know, this is not new to this board, this, these properties over here. And in the past, we'll get them cleaned up and then somebody else come along and dump it back up again. I don't want to keep coming back and cleaning up, you know?
Uh, it's a good question. I don't know how we handle that. I mean, it is what it is.
I don't think you'd over pump. That is-
I mean, what you gonna do?
The statute does not contemplate what happens later.
So what happens with an estate? I mean, can we not move forward with the attorney and have him, uh, clean this up at Justice Court?
Obviously, the attorney is not interested in communicating, uh... Renee's already put him on notice that we've got a nuisance issue that has to be dealt with. If we send this up to Justice Court, Jay, they've already indicated, as they told Renee, do not send another estate-owned property up here. Don't do it. We can't get jurisdiction over anybody. And, and we've had this discussion too. I've done what I could to, to help you guys understand the difficulty of that. You don't know who to, who is your defendant. The person that you're trying to pursue is dead. Uh, and until there is an estate proceeding in place, you don't even know how to communicate with anybody. You would have to have what's called an airship determination. And the, as the estate moves through the process, eventually, somebody's gonna need to do something with this property. So we've got two issues. We have a present nuisance problem that's not going to get fixed or addressed because the property itself is in a state of flux in the estate. So we can either clean it up ourselves and impress the lien on it, sort of hold our position, or we can leave it just like it is. And Jerry can keep dealing with the constituents in the community who-
Does it clean it up means removing those vehicles?
Yes, sir. It means everything that's there that's a violation of our nuisance considerations, Jay, we can take care of through this process.
What we do with the vehicle?
That they could be, uh, removed to a county-owned facility and liquidated. Uh, we can, uh, have somebody come in and make a price on them for us to take them off.
Oh, really?
There's a lot of options that we could do.
Yeah, but I mean, I didn't know.
What about if someone gets the vehicle? Well, I've been saying they come and get them for free.
If they can get access. Well, the problem is that, you know, you've got to deal with the title on those vehicles, Jay. So it would have to be somebody who's willing to come in there. It would have to be somebody that's in the business. Yeah, somebody that's in the business would, would take them and they would hold them. And if somebody wanted to get the vehicle back, they gotta pay the-
They're gonna hold them in overtime to get rid of them.
Yes, sir. And you could have an abandonment process that they can follow.
That's what I was getting at.
We don't need to be in that deal.
That's all I was asking. We'd have, it'd have to go through something like that.
Yes, sir. There's a statute process that they'd have to follow.
Y'all had asked at the last meeting how large that property was or how many acres it was. It's 2.17 acres.
What about the isolation property? Are we dealing with that?
It's looking real good.
He's doing better. He's gotten a good bit of that down.
It's amazing, Jay. Seriously, you would never guess he's cleaned up and done, tore down. Look, it's torn down.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, seriously, you-
Property, the property's well worth it, you know? You'd spend, what, $2,000, $3,000?
Even up to $5,000.
Yeah, it's again, you will get it back at tax sale. I mean, it's not like it's a huge, this is on Pearson Road, right? South Pearson?
Yeah.
So, you know, from a value standpoint, you know, money's there and the value of the lot.
What, what I would suggest, guys, is if we can go ahead and have the board authorize that as our process, we will communicate again with the attorney and explain now the board has decided to take action itself. This is your last opportunity to avoid the cost.
Okay, I see, and I see what Jay's saying and I'm sitting there thinking too, okay, what if we clean them up and then somebody won't start dumping, put some more out there? Somebody's got their own little salvage business and he's just gonna use that lot there. He's, how do we?
We don't, Jared, because it's private property. And at that point, it's, it's up to the owners of the property. You guys have a limited jurisdiction through the nuisance statute itself to take, essentially to take control, public control, of a piece of property for a limited time to clear the nuisance. But we don't have the authority to do anything beyond that. So roping it off or fencing it off, that's well beyond the purview of what our-
But if somebody started hauling back in there, what will we do? Because I know they can't do that anyway.
Zoning shouldn't allow somebody to come back with stuff after the fact.
How would we handle that? How could we enforce it?
We'd have same nuisance property.
Same nuisance process.
Right. So just to refresh my memory, we clean it up, our crews are going to do it, right? We, we pay somebody to do it?
Yeah, typically what we do is we have, uh, we have a list, that, that's a service for us. So we have a list of third parties that we can communicate with. I think what we've done in the past is we've, we've asked for, um, quotes. Yes, sir.
I got, I just wanna get a quote on it. We may be able to do that.
Right. So up to this point, Jay, we've not had, we've not had any quotes that come in above $5,000. They're, they're always less than that.
That's not $5,000.
No, sir.
If they're gonna take the vehicle, if they're gonna compensate some for that, no. That's a, that's a $1,500, $2,000, $25 tops right there. Because I've seen what they have cleaned up is way worse than that, $2,000. You're not tearing a house down. You're just moving this debris.
I, I'd like-
Okay, I make the motion to declare nuisance.
And, and you wanna stipulate in it to the-
That's up to the board, Bob. If you guys want us to reach out again to the attorney for the estate and indicate y'all have made this decision, we can do that.
I would.
Somebody's gotta, you gotta expand out your motion. Can't be just, say what you wanna say.
And to get quotes to get it cleaned up.
Okay, that's the motion by Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Bishop carries next, Mr. Slade.
It seems I did inherit this from you, Jayce.
Like I said, this is the first time it's come up.
Thank you.
All right, for the record, we, we'll make sure that hearing is closed. Uh, item B is a continuation of the Scott Purser nuisance property at 198 Andrew Chapel Roads, District 4 parcel. I will open that, reopen that public hearing. I'll ask for Renee to demonstrate.
All right, these pictures were taken November 27th. Um, we've gotten complaints on this property, uh, for years. He's a landscaper and he brought some vegetative debris in and dumped on the lot. These are pictures that were taken on the 28th. He has started trying to, uh, clean up.
Those are 28?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, set it.
If I may-
Declare a nuisance.
Well, this is Monday, aren't we?
No, this is, this is actually, we're actually taking action.
Go ahead.
Is there anyone here to speak on the Scott Purser nuisance property? Anyone? Okay, if you, if you don't mind, you can come forward.
Uh, I've gotten rid of most of, all of the debris. There's about one load of metal I need to take out of there. And then there's a couple dirt piles out there, but I was using all that for my dirt work around my house once I got done.
That's dirt piles right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That you see left is.
Okay.
That's where all the debris, there's that one pile-
That you burning?
Right back there. Well, all that's pretty much gone now, but that one pile right there is a little bit of stuff. But I was gonna, uh, probably just bury what was left because it's, it's not much.
Renee, do you have a recommendation?
Declare a nuisance, um, in case we have an issue again. We can go to court with it.
How long would it be before you have it?
Uh, I mean, that's, that's the problem this time. That's why I ended up burning it because the guy that I was gonna get out to haul it all off, it's just been too wet. I mean, it's, it hasn't stopped raining since I come up here last.
I think the problem is bringing it in.
Well, I'm not, I mean, I've got dumpster seats. I got one with me, but the rest of them are with my bookkeeper. And I could get them later, but, I mean, I've been dumping everything from now on. That's what I don't, I don't bring anything out there anymore.
Let's say, I mean, let's consider the nuisance and then give him, um-
You said it, it's gonna give to him.
Let her, let her give you, y'all work it, work it out with him. To where we don't have to come back if we have another complaint or whatever. I don't have to come back in here and start those, yeah.
Motion of Mr. Gaines is we set that, we declared a nuisance but allowed Dwayne and Renee's office to continue to monitor it. It can go itself away. Otherwise, it'll be brought back up before it's changed report in case it does not get corrected. Appreciate that. What you wanna do, Steve?
Yep.
Good enough. Sir, second. Second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Bishop carries next, Mr. Slade.
We'll make sure that hearing is now closed for the record. Uh, item C is the Charles Stephen Riles nuisance property, 171A Cumberland Roads, District 2. Uh, we will open that public hearing. Uh, let me ask, is there's, uh, I think we do have someone who wishes to speak on that matter, on the Riles matter. Yes, sir. But we'll go ahead and demonstrate with the photos first and then, if you will, you can come forward. Is, is Mr. Riles here? Sir? Okay, very good. All right. We'll hear from Mr. Riles first and then we'll hear from, I believe you're a neighbor. Is that correct? Okay, we'll hear from the neighbor next. Okay, Renee?
Uh, we've received complaints about this property. It's a duplex. Even back to 2008, uh, we had tried to contact Mr. Riles then and we, uh, never were able to make contact. But, uh, we've gotten a new complaint here, uh, from the neighbors. These are pictures demonstrating the condition of the property. And these are the new pictures. Um, they've put all the stuff out on the curb, which the garbage truck will not pick that up. But the house still has some issues.
Uh, Mr. Ross, you will.
Could you please state your name and address, please, sir?
Okay, uh, Charles Stephen Riles, 5714 Medallion Drive, Jackson, Mississippi.
Thank you.
Yeah, just tell me about it. Fill me in. What's going on?
Okay, um, I bought the house in 95. Met my current wife in about 2000, moved in with her. It sat a little while just fine. I, you know, steady paying for it. And, um, about four years ago, my stepdaughter and her husband wanted to move in, so I let them move in. Everything is fine. Everything was fine and, um, he developed non-Hodgkin's lymphoma and, and passed away from it about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. After going through all that, my daughter bought a place, another house. And, uh, so since, it's been vacant since, um, September of 2017. And as far as I was concerned, it was all locked up and just, uh... You know, I would come out in summertime and cut grass and stuff. I got a notice from a detective, um, no, I got a call from a detective a little after Christmas, of this past Christmas, uh, saying that it had been broken into. And, uh, after it, after that, then, uh, that's when I got the notice to get it cleaned up a little bit. So I finally got, uh, my daughter-in-law and a couple, not, not daughter-in-law, uh, stepdaughter. And they, they got it cleaned up a little bit. The only thing I really haven't been able to get cleaned up is that shed. I thought I was gonna be able to get all those vines and stuff off of it, but it looks like the top has fell through. Now, this here, you all wrote me about abandoned vehicles, uh, there, but that's not mine. And there's a lot of stuff in front of the fence there that is not mine.
Isn't that your property then?
Really, it's not. Where the car is parked, it's basically on 171B area. It's not really on my, it's, it's right on the fence line.
Do you know whose car it is?
I think it's the neighbor in 171B.
Okay. So it's not your stepdaughter's or one of her friends?
No, no. No. And so I, um, after the sheriff's department went out there and, um, talked to boys that broke in and everything, because they did damage to it. But, um, uh, their parents are supposed to be coming out to further take care of some of the damage that the boys did in order to keep me from-
Oh, you called them?
The detective did.
Oh.
And we've been-
Our great sheriff's department. Good job.
Oh, yes. But, um, the only thing really left that I have to do there is probably wash it up a little bit, clean it, maybe a little painting. The shed, I have to put a roof on it. But as far as everything that they had in the backyard, that was, as far as lawn chairs and whatever else that they had back there, that's all been cleaned up.
The stuff you got out front, the, uh, the garbage people aren't gonna pick that up.
They already picked it up.
They picked all that up?
Yes, sir.
No kidding?
No kidding. And then when I heard that you guys were gonna go out and take pictures of it and, because I was out here yesterday, I thought this meeting was gonna take place yesterday. So I went back out there to see if they did pick it up. And they did pick it up, but I think some other people had gone through the stuff and-
Oh, yeah. That makes more sense.
Yeah, they left stuff everywhere, so I went and picked all that up. So all of that is gone.
Yeah, I'm surprised they picked that up.
You too.
You, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if you're aware, but several years ago, we created an overlay district. And in doing so, we require not just the property, you know, items left outside, but we also require the property itself, the building, the material, the look of it. It needs to be, you know, presentable on the outside also.
Right, right.
So, yeah, you know, definitely gonna have to-
Right, well, my, my whole intent is to get it ready to rent again. So, I mean, I just have a look. For the, all the garbage and stuff that they had around there, that's all gone. I just need to get the inside, uh, fixed up a little more and paint a little bit on the outside.
Yeah, like that front, and that looks pretty rough right there.
Right.
A little paint there, fresh washed.
The exterior, the surface, exterior side of everything is what needs to be addressed. Pretty, pretty quickly.
Is that vinyl or wood?
I don't know.
It's, um-
Looks vinyl.
No, it's not vinyl.
It's not?
It's, um, it's some type of, yeah, some type of paper type, uh...
Some kind of hardy, hardy board.
No, it was a Masonite stuff.
Yeah, it's more like Masonite type stuff.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Cross?
Ms. Renee, you can kinda help me with our procedural stuff on this, but I know we need to continue over the hearing. More things to talk about?
Yeah, I wondered.
Yeah, I was gonna get Renee to kinda feed back in. Any other comments you've got addressing what he's talked about?
We definitely need to get a contact number for him before he leaves, but, um, I think just declared a nuisance, like I said, we've worked this before in the past and we've had a hard time getting in contact with him. That way we can monitor it, but if things don't, um, progress, then we can move on.
Our next step's Justice Court on that same side, but I know we want, some more people want to talk. So, Mr. Slade?
You'll make, uh, give your name and city address?
Thank you.
My name's Greg Evans. Uh, I live at 213 Bridge Circle in Brandon. And, uh, I've owned the other side of this property for the past 17, 18 years. And this place has, has been in that condition as long as I've owned the other side. And, and the only time it's been safe was when Mr. Riles' daughter or family was in there. The rest of the time, it's been abandoned. It has not been secured. The, there's a leak in the roof where the ventilator blew off years ago, so there's, there's a roof leak. My tenants are terrified about the thing. They've had people next door. They've had people lighting fires inside. They're smoking pot. They're, they're making lots of noise. They're partying. The, the Vieta family, which is my tenants, who got four children, and, and they're afraid they're gonna burn the house down. A month ago, somebody set a fire in there. The front window has been detached from the frame, so it's just open. Anybody can get in any old time. And, and it's just a catastrophe. It's tearing down property values in the neighborhood. It's attracting the wrong kind of people and it's just a nuisance. And, and somebody needs to do something about it. In 2009, I wrote a letter to Mr. Riles volunteering to manage the property for him. I'll get it fixed. I'll make it safe. I got no response. I, I volunteered to buy the damn place off him so I could clean it up. Nothing's happened. You know, somebody needs to do something. This is a public safety problem. It's full of mold. The family next door are afraid they're gonna get sick because of it. And people shouldn't have to live this way. And it, it just isn't right. And Mr. Riles either needs to sell it to somebody to take care of it or get it fixed up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have we done any kind of inspection inside to see some of, some of the?
You have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
You were very thorough. Uh, have, have we?
I don't know. I don't think we've been inside of it, inside the structure.
Dwayne has not gotten inside the structure, inside the house.
It's got mold and stuff. Sounds like we might need a-
We won't have that opportunity until he gets a tenant.
You gotta have a new tenant to do that, so... Yeah, so that's my motion, declare a nuisance and we'll move on from that point. Allow them to continue to monitor and work on it and take their steps.
I wouldn't do too much monitoring.
You wanna set a timer to the level?
Quickly, immediately, immediately. I don't even wanna set a timer. I want it cleaned up quickly. Outside, inside, secure.
There's a motion by Mr. Cross to go ahead and declare this a, a nuisance with a, Renee monitoring. Mr. Riles, please share your telephone number with Renee before you head out of here. Uh, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Bishop carries next, Mr. Slade.
If that, if this is, belongs to Mr. Evans' tenant, uh, they need to address it as well while we're here if that vehicle is inoperable, doesn't have a current tag.
Who's tag?
He said it was on the adjoining property owners. Will you check on that, Mr. Evans?
I will. I'll, I'll get the thing moved. I thought it was his car.
I will, I'll, I'll get the thing moved. I thought it was his car.
Okay.
But if it's not his, it must be my tenant's, I'll get rid of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, for the record, uh, that hearing is closed. Mr. President?
Yes.
With your pleasure, we'll move on. Item D, uh, y'all have to forgive me, I'm not sure how we pronounce that.
She's sitting back there, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, hi.
Uh, so, I'm not even gonna attempt, uh, on the first name, but I can get Kim, Kim Lan Wang, nuisance property at one twenty-two Floyd Street. This is District One. Uh, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
Uh, we worked this many years ago as well. We've had a complaint here about an old abandoned manufactured home on this property. Uh, it's sold, um, to Ms. Wang. But these pictures were taken in June. And these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-eighth. It's in bad condition and needs to be, uh, demolished.
Okay, what, I guess, what is your plan? You can see the, obviously, the problem, so what's your, you, you own the property now?
Yes, sir, I'm still owned it, yes.
Okay, so what, what do you plan on doing?
I, I did, uh, you know, get a letter, and I tried to bring it to respond, and I did get somebody cut the grass and tried to, uh, get that removed, but they draw me too much money, and I did, uh, come here and call for, ask some time to, uh, take care of it, but, uh, I, you know, I never, um-
So, you're planning on tearing that down?
Uh, nah.
Is that a trailer?
It's a double-wide trailer.
Is it?
Yes, sir. Back in two thousand ele- uh, no, sixteen, some kid, they put it on fire, so-
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's been back in since, uh, two thousand and ten.
Yeah, it definitely-
It's just, it's just gotta be-
They, uh, I asked somebody, uh, to tear it down, they say like, uh, close to five thousand dollars. So, it's kinda too much for me to come up with the money, and they want to, uh, pay cash, and I don't have that kind of, you know, to take care of it.
But you bought it. How long you owned it?
Back, uh, it been, uh, two, two thousand and nine or two thousand and eight.
Okay, so, it's not the first time that you've been notified about it?
Yes, sir.
This is, or is, this is the first time?
Yes, sir. I, right now, I try to, uh, get somebody to buy it.
Right.
And, uh, and, uh, they're thinking about it, and they say it's, you know, costing two, three thousand to tear it, and we try to, you know, get connected with the-
How many acres is there?
It's just one acre.
One acre?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever lived there?
Uh, no. I live in, uh, Jackson.
Oh, you just owned this property?
I owned, uh, the property, rented it out, but, uh, it been vacant.
Okay.
Yeah, two thousand eleven, and my husband, he passed away, so I just kinda, you know, not, uh, keep up with it.
Well, you know, the problem is, if we, if we declare a nuisance, you go up to justice court, they definitely gonna come down again, so-
So, I just, uh, need to ask some time for, for me to, you know-
How long you think we need to get it gone, start to tore down?
To tore down, maybe the people who, uh, we talking about it right now, to sit on the cry, to say, "Well." So, I, you know, maybe, uh, they still come up with the payment and stuff.
They giving you a price to tear it down, or a price to buy the place?
Try to buy the place.
To buy the whole place? And they buy it, then something, we gonna start all over again?
The people, uh, the neighbors behind it, they, they interest that land and, you know, and- We, uh, he, he asked me how much I want that land. I told him fifteen, and they say to tear it down, so we told him around ten eleven, they still thinking about it, so-
Well, I, we're not gonna have any choice, since it's been out there this long, honestly, I'd tell you, but to declare the nuisance. I mean, I don't know any, that might-
You know, I, I hate it, but, you know, we need to address it, 'cause this is affecting everybody else's values, and, you know, and it is obviously a public safety problem, you know?
Very much.
The kids could go get up in there and get hurt, there's no telling what else could go on, so-
If kids get in and get hurt, then they, you're gonna be the one they're gonna come after. So, it's, it's to your advantage to have something done to it for just the liability side of it.
We'll give you some time, but you, we need a specific date, you know, to get it addressed.
Last time I called, and someone answered the phone, and I asking him for some time, and they asked how long, and, uh, I never get a response, so just give me three or six months or something like that.
I don't think we're gonna be able to go that far.
Three, no.
It's, with the weather like this, it's like three, ninety-eight.
Yeah, but if we, if we declare, go on to declare the nuisance, and then, yeah.
Yeah.
And give you three months for you to take care of it, but then, three months is still there, you're, you're gonna end up having to go to justice court.
Okay, I, I will take that.
I think we have a number for Ms. Wang, but we wanna make sure that it's a correct number and an accurate number, so if you, you'll stop over there and make sure that number's-
You're gonna close it?
Yes, sir. We'll close that public hearing, and I, I think y'all have already made the motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Message carries next, Mr. Slade.
Yes, sir. Item E is the Blanche Ivy Estate Nuisance Property, two thirty-one Florence Circle in District One. Uh, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
All right, so, we received a complaint on this. There was a house that burned at this, on this property, um, a lot of rubbish and debris. These pictures were taken, uh, November the eighth. And it appears that it's gotten worse instead of better. Now, there's a camper that's been moved on the property, uh, and a lot of stuff. Somebody is here today.
Yes, so, uh, that hearing is open. Um, you guys here to speak on behalf of the estate?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you'll come forward, please, give your name and address for the record. You might also tell the board how it is that y'all are related to the estate proceeding.
My name is Brenda Dishar. I'm currently residing at one ninety-seven Florence Circle with Mr. Temple. Um, this was my mother's property. Um, she passed away in two thousand and ten. I've had a man that's dumping there.
Man do what?
He's dumping construction material there.
Illegally.
Illegally, yes, sir. I've, I've requested that he stop numerous times, and he still continues to do this. Um, our good friend, Mr. Morrison, um, Charlie Crosser was to buy this property, and I ran into a snag. Um, I have a quick claim deed. I have paperwork where my sister signed it over to me, but they say that it's not worth the paper that it's written on, 'cause she didn't have the rights to do that. Now, she was the, uh, she had the power of attorney over my mother, so we assumed. And I went through Kelly Law Firm across the street to have this quick claim deed made, and it was made in, uh, um, in two thousand seventeen, uh, the third, third month, sixth day, two thousand seventeen. I have a, a book number, a page number, and everything. Like I said, I have a quick claim deed. Now, Mr. Uh, Mr. Black, Ray Black, has been using this as his dumping grounds, and like I said, I've cleaned it up numerous times. Last time I got a letter from y'all, I got it cleaned up myself. I did this work myself. And it, it looked decent, you know, I still had a little bit of stuff from where they burned my house down. You know, I hadn't got that all cleared out, but I was working on it, and he has continued and continued-
How do you know, how do you know Ray, plus of Ray Black? How, is, I mean, is this acquaintance on me?
He is an acquaintance.
Why would he just pick, pick this lot?
Because he knew my house burned down, and he cleaned up the debris from the house.
Oh.
He hauled away all the metal, everything that was good that he could get money for.
Okay.
He hauled away.
I got you.
And that's, that's what he does for a living. And he's continuing to dump this stuff, even though, you know, I've asked him numerous times, "Please quit dumping and help me get it cleaned up." Now, my neighbor on the other side, uh, William Berry, he has offered to come over there with his mini excavator and push all this stuff down the hill and cover it with dirt, use it as, as a, like a fill material.
We didn't hear that.
How many acres is it up there?
Um, there's almost two, one point eight-nine, I believe it is.
That's a nice lot, and Charlie-
We didn't hear that.
No, and Charlie, uh, and Charlie, is Charlie still interested in it?
Yes, sir, he is, but I-
But, um, we, I know we don't get into that part, but what is, which direction she need to go further with that, so, just-
Uh, a couple of, a couple of questions that I would have, just to clarify. Is there, has, has your mother's estate ever been opened?
I don't know, sir.
Who, who else would know?
My sister, my sister, but she doesn't talk to me. We, we don't speak to one another. I've contacted her numerous times and left message after message after message.
Pretty quickly, who would she need to, who, what does she need to get, no, different attorney, I just mean, what direction, pepper there?
Unfortunately, um, this is what we see pretty consistently across the county. Without a formal estate proceeding, where either a will is introduced in the court to establish who are the rightful heirs, who are the rightful beneficiaries, unless there's a will, or if there is no will, an administration, which means this person's estate's gonna be administered without a will, and it's gonna follow state law. Without those formal proceedings, there is no way to clear up the issue of who is the rightful owner of this property now. The person who could sign a deed is dead, and there's been no formal process to determine who is the person who could actually sign this property, take possession of this property, and clearly title that in somebody else's, in somebody else's name. Okay, so the gentleman who wants to buy it cannot work with what's called a quick claim deed under Mississippi law. What that means is, I don't even know if I own it, but if I do own any part of it, or all of it, I'm transferring that to you, so you can understand why that is essentially useless. No bank is gonna make a loan-
Right.
Based on a quick claim deed, they're, on a quick claim deed, they're gonna want an establishment of title, which means that this is not gonna ever be cleared up until there is a formal estate proceeding that is filed on behalf of the lady who passed away, and the court then adjudicates who is the rightful owner. That is the only way to get this cleared up.
So, she, she just gotta, well, she can push it.
Yes, this lady right here is an heir-
Even without talking to her sister.
She's an heir of the lady died, so she would have a right to go into court and ask, in, in an estate proceeding, and ask the court to open the estate and administer whatever assets of the estate are there. There won't be anything other than the land, most likely, since she died eight years ago.
Right, there, yeah, the, the home was burned down. I was robbed, and, and it was burned down.
Right, so, the estate was robbed, and the estate's house burned down, to clarify. You understand that? So, we can make claims like that, but until the court adjudicates the rightful owner, this lady is, cannot, in any proceeding, uh, clearly and accurately claim to be the owner of the property. See what, the pickle that we're in.
Right.
It's why, when I opened this up, I said, "This is the Blanche Ivy Estate Nuisance Proceeding," right? We didn't, this lady's name wasn't on there.
Right.
Let me have y'all, let me see, what is?
There's two of us left.
Just you and your sister?
Yes, sir.
And she gave you the quick claim, that's the one that did.
Yes, sir, I have it, right here, I have her letter.
We don't, we can't help you on that part. We just gave you some quick free, free advice.
Who do I talk to to get it cleared up? Uh-
Kelly could help you. He handles the state proceeding.
He does, and when he give me this quick claim deed, he said he would help me with anything that I needed. I can't afford to hire Mr. Kelly again. You know, I've already paid out all I could pay out. Taxes are due again on the place. I'm struggling.
Right.
Understood.
Well, I understand everything in the, I mean, that, I mean, that's, that's, uh, something a little different than what we're dealing with here. I'd like to just see it cleaned up.
Yes, sir, I would too.
But, um-
It, it can't be fixed without a changed record order. It can, it just can't be fixed.
So, can I file these papers myself? Is there a way, somewhere to get it off the internet, to get my hands on these papers and file them myself? I'm sorry, I'm crying.
No, I, I understand, I'm just trying to, I'm trying, we're trying to help you.
Yes, sir.
I really are. I mean, I sympathize, 'cause my, what my statement was gonna be, you get it cleaned up, you put a rope across there, and, and if, uh, somebody comes back on there, you need to get them trespassing.
I have no trespassing signs all over the place.
I don't know how to, I know how I could stop it, but I can't tell you how to stop it.
Yes, sir.
Anything that you try to handle yourself in a state matter, um, there, I, I don't think it's possible. You, you have to have representation to, to help you with that. That is not a DIY project, I promise you.
Okay.
Um, it's complicated, it's lengthy, that's why they're expensive. It's, it's a lengthy, complicated process. And if you don't follow that process, then the property cannot be marketed, and if you don't deal with it as the, as the, as a surviving child of your mother who passed away, if you don't deal with it, then somebody else in the family is eventually gonna have to deal with that.
Okay.
So, it's, it's either y'all take care of it, you and your sister take care of it, or, did you say she passed away?
Uh, no, that, we're the, we're the two surviving siblings. There was four of us, two of us are dead. We're the only two left.
Okay, how many children were born of the two who passed away?
Uh, five with my sister, who passed, uh, like, ten years before my mother. And then, there's two from my brother, who passed two years after my mother. Now, these boys are willing to sign, uh, there was a, I guess, a real estate attorney, Mr. Youngblood, was working on, for Charlie Crosser's behalf, and, uh, they're, they would sign what I needed signed. And I have this from my, from my sister already, her statement signing it over to me. But I wasn't affor, I wasn't able to afford to go up to Louisiana where one boy's in prison to get these signatures, to take care of this, so Mr. Crosser could buy this property.
Some work's been done, and probably what's gonna end up having to happen is, um, at some point, y'all are gonna have to make a decision. Uh, and the decision probably looked something like this. I mean, he gonna get out there and clean that up, so the county will leave me alone, uh, and the neighbors will leave, the county will-
It's the neigh, it's, it's people around that's creating it. We're not going out there looking at it.
Yes, sir, I understand that, and I don't blame, I don't blame them a bit. I've complained myself to this man.
All right, well-
I imagine your buyer of the property, uh, could, uh, could pay for the estate proceeding to get this all cleared up as a part of the land transaction. You're probably not gonna clear anything on that, but your options are very, very limited. You're gonna have to have help to get it done. And those boys are heirs, they all have to be involved in that estate process. The five children of your other deceased sibling are all heirs to that property, unless your mom had a will.
So, I don't know if she had a will. I don't, I don't know how to find out if she had a will, 'cause my older sister won't talk to me.
I suspect if she had a will, that you would've known by now, more than likely. So, I would, I'd be willing to bet that there was no will, which means this is an administration. I, I don't know what that property's worth here, but, uh, more than likely-
It's a nice, it's a nice lot.
Now, you were close to what it's gonna cost to get an estate proceeding done.
No.
An administration, and you're looking at, at least five grand, maybe seven five hundred.
It's worth that. It's worth more than that.
Yes, sir. Charlie was gonna give me fifteen thousand for it.
Okay.
You might get half out of it if he's willing to take on the estate property.
I don't really care to have anything out of it.
No, what he's saying, if he take it on, and that'd be part of the, uh, come off the cost of the land, he might could do that. That's what I'm saying, if it cost him five thousand, then he'd, he'd it for ten thousand.
Yes, sir.
But I know, know who, I know Charlie, and, and he would clean it up, just like that, if it was his.
He had planned to put a, a, a double-wide there. He had planned to level out the land and make it real nice, back like my mother had.
Yeah, um, phew, man, well, really, really, Craig, if it's been a state, what can we do?
Well, we, we can go clean it up and impress a lien against it, and be a part of the tax obligation, just like we did on Pleasant Wells, Jr. It's the same-
What's out there? I mean, what is that?
That's the only way it's gonna happen, which is-
What's out there?
It's just junk, just build, old building material, junk, I mean, it's just, nothing-
It's just junk.
Nothing big, nothing that would take a, a lot to clean it up.
Well, try to, or grapple, clean it up?
Yes, sir, I believe it would. There, the little hump right there in the center, there are, uh, shingles off a roof there. That's why I haven't tried to burn that part of it. Most of the wood I've gotten burned. Everything I could clean up physically myself, I have cleaned up three different times. He still- I have cleaned up three different times. He still continues to come, and come, and come.
Though every, most of the things there, Duane, are things that someone else has dumped there. It's not old building material from the burnt house.
No, it's stuff brought in. Who's camper in that old car, and who?
It's his old car that he brought in there, and, and he was supposed to take it to the scrapyard, and I don't know how it's gotten turned up on its side like it has. Uh, the camper he brought there recently.
Who, who is doing this?
Ray Black.
Does he live there?
No, sir.
He didn't live in that trailer anytime?
No, sir.
I know Ray, I know Ray.
You know how to contact him?
No, I see him pretty frequent though. His dad lives in Star. You know where his dad lives? I can tell you.
Y'all both know, y'all both know who I'm talking about. If you're seeing, you know who I'm talking about, because I see y'all around town all the time. I used to go to church with you.
Yeah, he, uh-
No, I'm asking, give me thirty days to get the place cleaned back up. You know, let me get the taxes paid, or, or, or have Charlie pay the taxes and go ahead on it before clothes on it. Is that possible, since, since it's going to come up for auction anyway, if I don't pay the taxes?
Well, he pays taxes on it, but, uh, well-
Being more than two years, is it his third year?
This will be the third year, yes, sir, and I'm struggling to get two thousand sixteen paid. Because, you know, I would like to do this the right way with Charlie. Charlie's a good friend of mine, you know?
He's a good guy, yeah.
Yes, he is.
Um-
You know, I even thought about telling him, look, the taxes are coming due, go to the auction or wherever they do to, to, you know, buy the place, and you can have it for free for the taxes.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we do some of the others, declare the nuisance, just sit on it, go and declare it, just sit on it, and then, so-
What exactly does that mean, declare the nuisance instead of it?
Okay. Declare the nuisance means we're gonna, it, it's declared nuisance, and if we went through the standard process, that's, that was declared nuisance, and you'd be, eventually wind up in justice court, and they're going to be telling you, uh, whatever decision they make, which would be, you're going to clean it up, or, but when I say sit on it, we're going to declare the nuisance and just hold it. And the reason for that is we don't have to, if we, if we don't do anything, then we have to start this all over again, and so, but this way it gives you time.
Yes, sir.
It'd be just like starting over, only we won't have to start over. You're going to have, you'll have time to do it, you have time to work with, uh, see what Charlie has to do. Uh, if I see Ray, I'll put a bug in his ear.
Okay.
And, um, and, and help you that way. That's the only way we really can help you. Uh, uh, Charlie, I mean, if Charlie's willing to do some things, and maybe he will, and, and you can say this will come off the, settle this, and they'll come, we'll take this off the cost of the property. He may be willing to do that. Uh, he may be willing to clean it up and say this will come off the cost of property. I don't know. Uh, but the biggest thing that concerns me is how you're going, if, if it's cleaned up and when, well, it will be, then who is going to keep, um, how, how are we going to stop from dumping back on it again? Uh, and that's, that's something you just, I, I don't know the answer to that, same problem you heard us talk about another piece of property also.
Yes, sir.
But, the trailer be pretty easy to move, hook to it and go.
Yes, sir, he could hook to it and just tow it right on the way.
So anyway, that, that's my, that's the best way I know to help you. Uh, it's, it's not going to go away.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and you're, but you're wor, and, and I believe you're working every way you can, and I understand your backs against walls and things. Uh, I'm going to ride by there and look at it myself. I know where it is.
Okay.
And, uh, I, I mean, that's as fair I know as we can be. We, but we are give, still giving you time in that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I'll, if I see Charlie, I'm even going to talk to him myself. I'll do what I can do on a personal, personal side.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, all right. All right, Greg, I guess, I guess we'll close it. Somebody else here or anything?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
So, your motion is to declare the nuisance, but get them to monitor it.
Right, right.
That's motion by Mr. Morris. Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in place, like, sign, basic carries next, Mr. Slade.
Yes, just for the record, we, we have closed that hearing. Uh, item F is the Daniel and Sherry Flanagan, Cherie Flan, Finnegan, sorry, Finnegan nuisance property, three ninety-two Barker Road. This is District Four property. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask for Renee to demonstrate for us, please.
All right, we received a complaint in September of twenty eighteen about rubbish and garbage, inoperable vehicles, grass and weeds. These pictures were taken on the eighteenth of September. Uh, we sent the certified mail. Nothing was received. It was all unclaimed. And then these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-eighth, and there hasn't been any change.
Where is this?
On Barker Road, three ninety-two Barker Road.
It's District Four.
We're going to look now. Not enough.
That property joins the property where the camels are at, and I think that's where the complaint come from.
Camels?
Camel.
Camels. Really? Single hump, double hump? Well, I didn't know we had any camels here in Franklin County. You get a picture of the camels?
I did.
What were you saying, is adjacent to the property?
It, it, or it is the-
This one?
Right next door.
I'm going back all the way to the first. This one?
What district was it in?
You see to the right, that field, that open field?
They're out there? They're out there?
Oh, yeah.
It's like they've been-
Where Barker Road is.
It's been-
That's District Four, isn't it?
Yeah. It's like they've been having a mud derby out there, always.
People that will come into, like, visiting camels.
Oh, the camels are an attraction.
Yeah.
And so are visitors to see the camels.
All right, Mr. Slade, we end the public hearing here and then-
Yeah, we can, if y'all are prepared to move forward with, with action on that. Is anyone here to speak on the Finnegan matter? I didn't see anybody that, anybody? Okay.
Is, what do you, what, I mean, from seeing that, what do you recommend?
Declare the nuisance.
I mean, I know that, but I'm talking about-
Look like a bunch of meat here.
Looks like they're having a mud derby out there.
Steve, this one's, uh, this one would be right in the wheelhouse to let a justice court judge put some pressure on some folks, um, and, and there should not be a reason for the justice court to be squeamish about this one. They, they've got the ability to get jurisdiction over the owners. We don't have an ownership issue here. So I, I would suggest, let's move it to justice court and let our justice court judge handle it.
I'll make that one.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Dean, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in place, like, sign, basic carries. Thank you, Mr. Slade, next.
Yes, for the record, that hearing is closed. Item G is the Dewey McGowan Home Tech Construction, Inc. nuisance property. This is one eleven Lansdowne Street. This is District One property. I will open that public hearing, and I'll ask for Ms. Renee to help us.
All right, so we received a complaint in August of twenty eighteen about an, um, abandoned man, abandoned manufactured home, inoperable vehicles, weeds and grass, rubbish and debris. These pictures were taken October the second.
Lansdowne.
Plantation shores.
Oh, okay, uh, okay.
And these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-eighth.
Hey, Renee.
Yes, sir.
This was all in October. Why aren't we waiting so long to bring this up?
Well, uh, we, we, we do try to work with people and give them some additional time anyway, before they get here.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate that.
If they contact us in different things like that, um-
I, I, and I, I appreciate that. That sometimes helps us out.
Yeah, absolutely. These last long enough.
Now, he, is this rental property his?
No.
Dewey's, he is.
Okay.
Okay.
Hold up.
Well, when he said it was, uh, okay.
Please state your name for the record, please, sir.
I'm Dewey McGowan. I'm the owner of Home Tech Construction.
Yeah.
Uh, I buy tax deeds.
Right.
And I received this property in a tax deed in September, October. It wasn't long there, so about the time y'all got the complaint, that's when I took ownership. But anyway.
I bet you're real interested. What else you want to say?
Yeah, I wouldn't believe the pain I go through. But, uh, um, when I got it, unfortunately, I didn't get all three lots. I got two lots. I got the two outer lots.
I got you.
And a man, my Mr. Wade, got the middle lot. So first of all, when I hired a lawyer to do tax confirmation, I'm going to tax deeds that I received this year. I already put retainer, because that's in process. I can't go out there and touch the man's personal property. Dude, he can come out, I'm told he's in jail. I'm told he's in prison. I don't know. That's secondhand information. But anyway, so if I go remove his personal stuff, when he gets out, he can sue me as an individual. I don't have the rights that y'all have and protection to remove stuff like that. So until I get my confirmation, I can't go out there and touch the place.
But you own it?
No.
You kind of?
Kind, I mean, but the other problem is too, to clean it up, I don't own the main part of it, which I believe has been jarred and a mowed home and a shed. I own the two outer lots. You follow me?
Oh.
So, I mean, it, it gets, it gets only worse. In the meantime, I haven't really done a lot with, as y'all can tell by face of, I'm taking chemo. I got, I got skin cancer. And I've had three surgical procedures in the last six weeks. But anyway, I'm getting back on the game. I shut the business down November the thirtieth, if I can tackle my health issues, but I'm getting back at the game. I met with a lawyer two or three days ago and gave him the retainer check to start my process of things that I need done. So, but I got a, I got a man, actually Jason Wade, from what I understand, the man that owns the middle lot, has got a man that wants to buy the property. And we've basically given it to him, just so something can be done with it. So right now, I'm not in condition to go out there and clean it up myself. But, I mean, I had a girl work with, Renee, she knows my properties. I take care of my properties. I'm not a junk landlord, if I know, man. But, but anyway, uh, so we got a man that says he wants to buy. He's giving us five hundred bucks, you know, lot, so. And it didn't cover the taxes money I got out, but if I can just get somebody, I think, and, and get it cleaned up, and more or less give it to somebody, more than willing to do it. But right now, my hands is tied, because I don't own the main part of the junk, and the two that I do have some type of ownership in is still tied up till I get a confirmation here, because I can't touch that man's personal property. If I touch it, then I'm responsible for everything I removed from his property.
Is Wade, is he the original owner?
He's the man that bought the tax deed on the center lot. Now, when you been-
So now he's in jail?
Yeah. No, no, no. Another man was, was one in jail. Wade's the one, all three of lots were sold and taxed out. I bought two, Wade bought one.
Yeah.
The man that's in jail was named, uh, I'm sorry, I'm a file, it was in storage, I didn't have a chance to go get him. I've been pretty sick, but, but anyway, I can't remember his name. It seem like Busby or something. I may be wrong. I got so many of these tax deeds, I can't keep them all straight. But, so, as soon as I can get the authority to clean something up, of course, I guarantee you my property's will be cleaned. But in the meantime, I'm so restricted, because I don't want the man coming after me for personal property damages by removing stuff. Now, if y'all want to go move it, y'all got my blessing, because y'all, y'all got the protection of courts behind y'all. I don't have that protection yet. You see what I'm saying? So-
If, if the middle part is to Mr. Wade, why did you get a bail?
I don't know. I don't think, according to what I'm told, Mr. Wade has not been given notice.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I'm not trying to tell y'all legally, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't know if y'all are doing anything at this point, because he wasn't given notice. As you say, so that's why he says, maybe he was, maybe, you know. But, but anyway, so, what I'm trying to say is, it's a lot of legal complications here. I'm not the lawyer. I just know that I can't go out there and touch it right now. Dude, I got liability on me. The man can get, get me good. And I, I, Mr. Wade's the one that told me the man's in prison.
The one who owned the property?
The, yeah, the, the previous owner. What's his name? Oh, he didn't have it either.
Okay. So he doesn't really matter anymore. But Mr. Wade is willing to sell it or give it away to?
Oh, yeah, I'll tell you, we got a man we're actually supposed to meet with tomorrow.
Okay.
That's supposed to be giving us five hundred dollars a lot, you know, and he also posted with his last ride, he didn't do it either. So again, you, you see what we're going through, but, I mean, I'm willing to just give it back to the man that had it, just leave it back to him, but he's in jail. He can't do nothing with it either. And normally, again, I really get on top of these things pretty quick. I just, I've just been sick.
Well, I don't know really anything we really can do at this point.
I, I, I don't think that someone made a purpose of it, you know, any better on it. You don't have clear title.
Yeah, I'm just giving him just a quitclaim, but he says he's going to clean it up. He gets, I think he's one of the neighbors, but that's going to be between him and the man that owns it.
Right, right. So he'd be out of it then.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be out of it then. I just, I just don't want, because I'm the one that's got the assets that the man can come after and sue for, if I touch his personal possession. The man's buying the property, but I ain't got the assets he can come after and sue for.
I'm like you. I, I get, I could get rid of it. I'd move it on, let somebody else have that problem. But anyway, if, at this point, I don't see anything we can do. And see what you can do on your end. I appreciate you coming and-
Oh, yeah.
Letting us know what's going on, do you, so.
If you'll keep, if you'll keep the Renee and Wayne and-
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, they have my numbers as well.
What you're doing, if you are going to transfer to somebody, it'd be nice for us to know who that is, so we can communicate with them, and just make sure that he gets followed up on.
Yeah.
So that would be nice.
Because I'm going to be getting calls about, I mean, I, I'm not aware of it, but I'll be getting calls, like, come y'all hadn't done something.
Yeah, well, normally, when I see a property like this, I don't accept the tax deed. Normally, I just, you know what I'm saying, but this- Yeah, anyway, so I just sort of in a bind right now with it, and, uh, it's just a process. It's not a fast process, because it could take six months by the time I get in court and get a confirmation here.
Right, right.
You know, and there ain't no guarantee I win it when I go there, you know, because I've won some and lost some.
What's the pleasure, Mr. Slade?
I don't know.
Personally, I think this matter ought to be, um, we ought to just end this matter, uh, and let the, and the base start working on how we make sure we get good notice to the middle lot owner as well.
I got his phone number.
Revisit this issue.
You got some information of that, maybe?
Yes, I got his phone number.
We'll probably just start this process again, and maybe back talking about this in sixty days.
All right.
I would be more comfortable if we did it that way.
That work. Appreciate you sitting through all this and hear that. Tell us that. Thank you.
I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Slade.
Oh, I think that's not nuisance, is it?
Yes, yes.
It's a review.
Oh, it's a review hearing? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, so I'm, I stand corrected. Uh, we, this is a review matter on the Lorna. Yes, don't know that last name. Two oh three McLaren Drive, District Five. Is, uh, is Ms. Kawaja present? Don't believe we have anybody by that name here. Sir?
Sound good to me.
Yeah, I made a, I made a run at it there. Uh, so Renee's going to, is going to demonstrate this condition. Let me point out to you guys that this is a review hearing. So we're not in a position to take official action, uh, with respect to nuisance. We've got to move through that process, but we wanted this in front of you guys, so you could see, uh, and give us some feedback on the next steps.
Well, I was really happy for the people that come.
Yeah.
Uh, so we-
That was the purpose.
Yeah.
To give them an opportunity to be front and center. So, let Renee demonstrate, and then Jay, you.
We received a complaint about the old camper here parked on the property, and a van that's inoperable, doesn't run. Uh, they backed them both up so close to the garage, we can't tell if they're tagged or not, but the camper is in bad condition. Uh, the mail was returned to us yesterday, so we found out that, um, Lorna, whatever her last, however you pronounce her last name, uh, is not at this address. She lives out of state, and so it's a rental property. We knocked on the door yesterday and talked to the tenant, and, uh, he said that he would try to be here today, uh, but they are planning on selling the camper. And, um, we just told him that there was an issue with the van and the camper, but obviously, he did not come today.
Yeah, I, the problem is, this is at the very front entrance of the neighborhood, and man, I've had, I'm amazed there's not people here, uh, but-
Me too.
You know, it's an eyesore, to say the least. So, you know, I, I need to go on.
Jake, what neighborhood this is?
Barnet Bend.
Barnet Bend, okay.
One of the-
Do we have any idea where the property owner is?
Evanston, Illinois.
Okay.
And we can start the process with her and send a letter and ask her to-
Mm-hmm.
That's the, that's the key. We've got to get the owner, uh, on notice, uh, the outstate, Jake.
Right.
That's very problematic, as you know, but, uh, maybe we can ramp it up. Uh, I'd like to, I'd like, uh, to, to help Renee with that notification process.
Well, I mean, that picture really doesn't do justice how bad a camper is. It's got duct tape holding in the windows, you know, so, I mean, it is, uh-
I thought that was tin foil.
No, that's tape on the inside. If you look on the other, well, no, you see the duct tape on the door?
Yeah, that's it. I thought it was tin foil.
So, uh-
That's a closer.
Let, let me work with Renee on how we want to ramp up some of the pressure on this. Uh, I've got a couple ideas that I want to discuss.
All right.
But I, uh-
Long as we get it going.
Yeah, Renee, I'll start working on a couple of thoughts that I have about that. Um, do we have the name of the renters?
Uh, we don't know the name of the renter, but we can get the, we'll travel with them.
Make some, some effort to get specific name, address, details. Got to do all that. Renter and owner, but-
Okay.
We'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so that was just review, so we're just acknowledging that we- Okay. Uh, so that was just review, so we're just acknowledging that we've had that review, and there's no further action needed to take on that.
And just, uh, Renee, just remind you, I need to talk with you, uh, after some other time. We need to talk to give a break on the Canouse property.
Okay.
Hey, on that issue earlier when we tabled that item for Monday, do we not need to vote on that? The fabric guy?
The tabling guy that you made?
Yeah.
Vote on what?
If we didn't vote to table it, why don't you go ahead and do that before we close that out?
I make a motion to table that on Monday's meeting.
Second.
Second, Mr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, both carries. Negative, four to one. Sorry, Mr. Bishop's opposed.
Yeah.
What else, Mr. Slade? Anything else, Renee?
I want the, let the record reflect of those eight, uh, mi, uh, nuisance properties, not one from District Three. So thank you, citizens of District Three.
They'll be here on the fifteenth, but they're not here today. So that's a good thing. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn this to February twenty-eighth or not?
My vote's second.
Best Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Morrison, in discussion on Thursday, aye. All opposed, like, sign, both carries. We will now call the Royal Rankin County Ward Supervisors Meeting. Public comments. Ms. Bennett, please come on up. We appreciate your patience and sitting through all this. Yes, Mr. Slade?
Just for the, just for the purposes of clarity of the record, uh, if you will, I want us to adjourn to February four.
Okay.
Since we tabled that matter. If we got to revisit as a planning commission, I, I, I don't want us to be out of session always when we get so...
Let the record reflect that quiet motion and second vote reflects on a February fourth date, Ms. Jessica, Ms. Wanda, whoever else needs to know that. All right, we ready to move on?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Bennett, have at it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to formally introduce myself to each and every one of you. I am Tamika Bennett. Um, I know you guys are considering me for a position, and I really would appreciate your consideration. I'm available for any calls or concerns that you all have, and I live here in the community. I don't know what else I'm supposed to say, but, uh...
I don't even know why you're here, honestly. I think we're...
We've got, we've got the matter on the agenda for February four, so I really appreciate, uh, Ms. Bennett coming forward to make sure you guys got a name and a face together. It's on the map, it's on the agenda for February four for, for formal action. Uh, and I, I do know this, and I'll, I'll say this, uh, if, if the law will allow me, that you can highly recommend it.
Thank you.
And so, uh, we're, I, I know I've been wanting excited about your taking over as our spokesman and security officer, and that should be a lot of excitement about your job this way.
Now you know, Jeff.
Yeah.
Thank you. I only, I only came because when I talked to you, you had told me it was today. So I wanted to make sure I came, so y'all would be like, she didn't even show up.
Get information, precision.
Now we know why, now we know where the hiccup came.
Thanks for throwing out that bus.
No, no, no. I just wanted to make sure. I don't want y'all to be like, she didn't even come, and we told her, you know, so...
Today, we're just glad that James actually here to meet you.
There you go, there you go, there you go.
Oh, my God.
There you go.
All right, uh, next up on public comments, Mr. Boyd Robertson of nine hundred Northwood Circle up on Brandy. Mr. Bo, uh, Mr. Robertson, go it up.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know this meeting is dragging on, so I'll try to be brief. Just a few comments. Uh, I've been attending some of your meetings, found them educational, sometimes entertaining, but...
Yep.
Back in December, a couple of things came up. One was the courthouse parking lot. Apparently, the contractor found debris twelve feet down and made a proposal to you that you dig out ten feet of dirt, refill it, uh, got some geotech people come in and said that's what needed to be done. And the board authorized, I think, for him to, to pay two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to dig the dirt out and replace it. They talked about six feet, a hundred and fifty. You know, in the end, it was two hundred and sixty thousand dollars was approved to dig the dirt out, put new dirt in, and I think leave the debris under. There's quite a bit of discussion of different ways to do that. But anyway, somewhere north of quarter million dollars was approved for that project. Uh, seemed like the contractor was getting toward the end of his free days on delays. I'm not sure whether that's...
Probably not true. Uh, he's got rain days. He hadn't exercised yet, but, I mean, that was the accusation. He needed more days, so all of a sudden, he, he tried to come up with this, this...
What it looked like.
But we, we put that to the side, and we agreed to move forward, so...
Well, generally, y'all do a good job. I'll say that for you. I mean, like I said, when I don't have anything to do, it's, it's entertaining, sometimes educational to come to these meetings. Following that, the canine facility came up, same meeting. And there was a request for payment from the board for the mechanicals, plumbing, electrical, heating, and air conditioning on that project. As I understand, it was a thousand square foot building. And the request was for a hundred dollars a square foot for the mechanicals, which I know they got new math in school now. Back when I went to school, it's been a long time, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars to put plumbing and air conditioning a thousand square foot.
Well, just so you know...
Canine facility, which...
We have not done that.
Well, I'd call it a doghouse. I mean, that's nice. But then, it, it came up that, well, in addition to this, it's gonna be, uh, at least a hundred thou, a hundred dollars a square foot or more for the building. So you're talking two hundred. And, uh, y'all may have addressed this, so hopefully you have.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, yeah, we have.
So, what you did at that meeting, they said the sheriff had some inmates that could do this, and you kind of turned it over to them. So, you know, I think that was a good move. Well, I know the sheriff, they do a pretty good job with what they're doing. And then, I guess when you think it can't get any worse, it did. Because you're meeting on January the fifteenth, two weeks ago. Section twelve, item eight. This is not from memory. I'm gonna read this one. Authority to pay J H and H Architects Planters Interiors, P A, invoice nineteen dash zero one zero zero for architectural services in the amount of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the Rankin County Canine Facility, and authority to issue a check. If I remember correctly, the board approved that. I don't know how y'all got into that, what the deal is, but, by the way, Ms. Janice found a copy of this. That's the plan. It's twenty-six thousand dollars worth right there. And it's a nice facility. And don't get me wrong, the dogs, sheriff's office, they need this. Uh, it's, I'm not down on the dogs at all.
What do they call it? What's the dog, value of the dog?
About twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And let me say this. I've got three. They're all rescues. They're picked up, somebody threw them away or whatever. One of them's an old dog. Wife found him in Laurel last year. Ten years old, and, you know, they were gonna probably put him down. So she went down and got him. He lives in the house. They got a doggy door. Everything's good, except when it's cold or rainy. And when it's that, he'll poop in the floor. He won't go outside. And I think figuratively speaking, what y'all have got here is kind of like the old dog. I think your architect has pooped in the floor, tracked it all over the house, and y'all are the five guys that can fix that. Uh, just, some of this money that you're talking about spending some of these things, from a taxpayer standpoint, just don't look reasonable to me. But like I said, y'all do a good job, and I think from talking to one or two of y'all on top, some of these, these issues, maybe you've edited it off. I hope you have. But thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and hopefully, your indulgence, if I went over the three minutes.
Thank you, Slade. We appreciate it. Mr. Lynn, come on up.
Vann would say something. I just wanted, um, to be in myself and the board on that office. If any of us would have had any idea, it was gonna be that policy should give us that call for that design, we would have never even saw it. I could have built a thing for that, you know?
I'm gonna spend it.
It was, it was, we had no idea when you talked that much. I had no idea. And I said, all of them was the same, same place. It's all the dogs. I had no idea. I said, I could build a house with it. Seven hundred thousand dollars, we could build something amazing.
You could.
It'd be bigger than a thousand square foot.
No, no, it was, I just wanted to bring it out.
I want to ask.
Well, appreciate you bringing it up, too.
I think they're addressing it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Lynn. Thank you. Welcome, welcome. Well, Mr. Lawson's got something to hand out first.
All right. Are we ready?
Yes, sir. How about it?
Okay. We have been asked to look at how we could fund your, your road projects, working within the same tax mileage, and to come up with the best plan that, that we could to achieve that purpose. You have identified some twenty-two million dollars worth of road projects with about eight million dollars of it coming from grants, you know, participations, leaving about a fourteen million dollar, uh, funding, um, for you. So, you know, we, we looked at a lot of ways, uh, and, and the way that we, I, I feel like what we have here is probably the, is the best, uh, method. It would require point eight five mils to be reallocated from the road fund to the bonding interest fund, which I call the capital fund, uh, but, uh, for two years, and then it would roll back. And that would allow us to issue four, fourteen million dollars worth of bonds net to the project. Uh, the bond issued is estimated to be fourteen million, three sixty. That covers the cost and, and to pay, you know, the legal fees and all that's associated with that. And, um, but you'd pay it off in eight years. Uh, that, this, this, uh, would allow you to go through the Mississippi Department of Bank to a, to do either a limited offering to banks because it's within their, I guess, their, um... They like bonds that are twelve years or less, so I think a number of banks would be interested in bidding on it if you went, wanted to go that way.
Yeah.
Uh, which is like what we did when we did the, uh, the building, the maintenance building.
Right.
Uh, you know, I think we'll get some strong bids. I have a very, very, very conservative interest rate pro forma to you. I think, you know, so I, I want to be hiring and come in lower. I want a plan for the worst in, 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 in that respect, so...
So in two years, you, that, is that that bond that's rolling off? Is that how you're saying in two years that we would, uh, be able to reallocate point eight five?
Well, the two years gets us the, the money to go forward with it to, 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 we have debt rolling off. That gives us time to let that debt roll off. We come in. And we have, we have mirrored up the roll off of the debt with, with this payment to, to shorten the terms, short as we could.
The point eight five mils would take about eight hundred and some odd dollars out of your road maintenance fund for two years. You're looking about, you know, about, you know, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars coming out over two years, but you're getting fourteen million in return for taking that out. Now, that's gonna mean some restructuring of your road department.
Budget.
That's exactly right, yes. Because that's about a little over eight hundred coming out each year.
Yeah, you said...
For two years.
Yeah, I don't think, you said a hundred and eighty thousand.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, eight hundred thousand, yes, for a million about a million.
She didn't want to say that.
I, I didn't want to. I didn't want Mike to hear it.
I got pretty good.
But, but you're giving up for just two years. You're giving up about a million seven to get fourteen.
And, and pay off that fourteen million dollar bond in eight.
Eight years.
So, then you're, you know, you're in a real position in that, in that fund to do significant projects later on.
So the roll off is coming, will service the debt?
Yes.
After two years? Yeah.
After that two-year period, yeah.
And in two years, then your point eight five can go back.
Okay, I got it. Yep. And that's those three projects.
That is, and look on the second page. That are, that is all of these projects listed here. Now, of course, you've got, um, I think it's February the thirteenth before we know if you get two of those funded, and that could make a difference depending on how that goes. That's the, um...
So you're not figuring, wait a minute, you're not figuring in the fact that we may get some funding from that?
Yeah, she is.
Yes, it's figured in on this second page that you are to get it. If we don't get it, then that's gonna mean something else.
Or reallocated to a different project.
Right.
Oh, so you're adding in North Shore and Spillway?
Yes.
The money from there, too?
Right, but the MPO, the possible funding from MPO, is here as a possibility of grant funding.
That's the, the one we're already committed to.
Not our current, we're bidding now.
The one we're already committed to, you already got budget, right?
Pardon?
Don't you already have that in the budget? The one we're already committed to, the North Shore Parkway?
Yes, we're talking...
About the one we put in.
Yeah, we're talking about the one we...
We're talking about an overlay deal.
Right.
That you put in for.
We added one overlay and one project.
That's right. It's number four and five on the second sheet here. And you know, y'all did a fifty percent match on those.
Right.
So it would fund, by doing this, fourteen million dollars, it would fund all of these projects that you see on this second page. They're like, we could be adjustment made if we don't get the funding on those two from MPO.
I don't even know what some of these are. Boker Road, Monterey Road, Thomasville Road.
That's a, that's an intersection.
These were all on that sheet that Tim and Buster gave to you, the long sheet. I have a copy of it here that we...
Intersection there. Am I right, Bob? Yeah.
And then...
You got, it's, it's straightening up the intersection.
Harley Circle Street.
Yeah, Hanley, that's in, uh, back part of Castlewood. That was a project started back in sixteen that Buster and them hadn't moved on. I mean, it's just been designed, it's just been sitting there, right?
Yeah.
So, we were pretty, the debt back in six, two thousand sixteen, it just, like a lot of other stuff, we get, just stalls. So, no action's been taken on that in two years.
Well, we don't have, I don't see nothing wrote on here.
This was all taken, all of this, these projects were taken off of this sheet that was given to us, um, I don't even know, I don't know what date it was given to us on, but this was the one that, um, I think Tim maybe presented it. Y'all each had a copy of it that looked like this.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what was given to us as the projects out there, so that's what we went. Now, if you don't get the money from the MPO, and you do get the fourteen, then you can reallocate it to another project. Those projects, we didn't go forward with them.
Typically, we build into all of the bond issued documentation, if y'all chose to go that direction, we try to build in a good bit of flexibility in that so that the proceeds are available for, sometimes we have a good plan, but, you know, in the middle of it, we may need to make some adjustments to the plan, so we try to build some flexibility in there so y'all can use the bond proceeds accordingly.
Let's, could I make a, I'm gonna make a suggestion here, gentlemen. You know, since this is going to impact, uh, road department budget, that maybe twenty, maybe the fifteenth, but we'll meet back on the fifteenth. By then, we'll know where MPO is and where we kind of stand there. Maybe at the fifteenth meeting, Mike can come...